All right, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our first town hall of 2021. We're, it's the first one, right? Yeah, it's the first one. Um, we're excited to be back and give you all an update of everything that's going on. I hope everybody's having a good day and a good year so far. Um, hopefully this year we'll bring you many good things, uh, beginning with, um, today in our town hall and, uh, just overall, just, um, things getting better. So that is our hope and our wish and, um, and, um, I'm here to share some information that will hopefully, um, hopefully will loot all of that and let you know some things we're doing and where we're at and where we're planning to go as far as COVID and things we're doing here. Um, so we'll, uh, we'll jump into this. Um, we'll take questions as we normally do, um, afterwards. Hopefully I can answer a lot of this, a lot of questions you may have. Um, just be mindful, I may not have answers to everything and a lot of things that you hear, uh, may still be under state requirements or best practices. So, um, so I'll, you know, I'll, I'll mention that if, if a call comes in with a question or anything. So, um, anyway, we'll go ahead and, and dive into this. Um, I wanted to first just talk about the COVID vaccine. Y'all should have received at y'all's doorstep today, if you've not seen it yet, um, some information that Kerry Ritchie and Chris Lawyer dropped off regarding our vaccine on the 26th. It's got all the information you need. Uh, it's a flyer with times and locations and where to go. I think it's going to be set up very similar to last time, but we were able to make some improvements. I thought the first time went extremely well, being as we gave out almost 800 doses and it was only the second clinic they performed, that's the largest one by far that they'll do. Um, so we were able to, um, kind of just learn from some of our mistakes that hopefully y'all didn't notice as bad and make everything, um, streamlined a little better. Um, one thing that will help out, um, flow better is we'll have all the doses drawn up in vials, um, to be ready to give the, uh, the vaccinations that are having to draw them up while you're here. That, that, that took a little time, but again, we got everybody done, you know, before six o'clock on that day, the 29th of December, which was amazing, we're going to make it even better. So we had a bunch of volunteers. I recognize all those volunteers with a thank you and a gift card. Um, people like Joyce and Allison Weaver and Kerry Ritchie and Beth Holden, everybody that helped Lori, everybody that helped, um, just make it, um, flow smoothly. So, so we appreciate that. So you're going to have all that information at your doorstep about the 26th and, uh, everything that you need to do. And, um, and then the day of the vaccine, we will know when the third round will be given. Now at that point, if you've received your second vaccine, you don't need to do anything. But we are offering, um, the first, first round vaccine for any staff or residents that did not get it the first time, that would like it on the same day. Therefore they will have to have a follow-up clinic to give them the second dose. Um, when they get them the second dose, they will, um, I'm thinking if things run the way it did today, they will administer our first dose again for somebody that, that was not able to get it this time. I think they're only going to offer three clinics and then after that you'll have to, um, either staff or residents will have to get the vaccine whenever it's allotted to them within the state's plan. So, so we do have two more chances to get it for everybody and that will be on the 26th and then 28 days usually after that, whatever that will be, um, we'll offer a third clinic and we'll know that the day of, the exact day hopefully. So, um, with that, I wanted to jump in, um, to talk, I know there's been some concern and, and questions about staff receiving the vaccine and I can understand and appreciate that concern and kind of frustration a little bit. Um, I, I have some of those same feelings, but I, I do see both sides and I have to, and I do have to manage both sides. Um, we currently have about 50 more employees signed up to take the, to receive the vaccine this go around. Um, a lot of employees were not here that day, so they are going to come back and, uh, and receive the shot. And, um, and then hopefully we're going to get a lot of people, um, these are the people that's already pre-registered to get the vaccine, but hopefully we'll have more people just show up, um, that we have not accounted for, um, as far as our pre-planning. Um, one thing we did, um, today and we're going to do it again at three o'clock, so I've got to be done by then, uh, we're doing an educational, like panel discussion with about five employees. Um, it includes myself and includes, um, someone from housekeeping, want some, someone from dining, um, and someone from nursing. And we tried to get a makeup of different, um, races and ethnic groups and backgrounds. We have myself, um, two African-Americans, one man, one woman, um, two Filipinos, um, one man, one woman. And then we'll have, um, someone, um, Hispanic gentleman, um, this, um, join us for the, the afternoon session. And the idea is just for everyone to feel comfortable getting the vaccine. I've learned a lot about vaccines and why people are hesitant about it and a lot of it's a cultural issue. Uh, that was before my time, so I was not, um, I was not a part of that, but it's been very interesting and to some people it's very real. So hopefully they can relate more to, um, to, to someone that they work with. We're very blessed, have a very diverse and very, um, diverse work culture here at Springmore. So we have a lot of people from different places that can help and talk to each other and maybe make them feel more comfortable than other, either myself or a nurse, um, you know, telling them. So anyway, we had one this morning, it went very well, had a lot of good questions, um, came up, found out a lot of things, a lot of people were hesitant or why they didn't get the shot the first time and then why they're going to get it this time. Um, a lot of it was, um, a couple of things I took away. It was neat that a couple of people there had COVID before and they were worried about, um, getting the vaccine. And it has been, um, suggested if you've had COVID before to still get the vaccine. You still, if you've had COVID, you, you do build up some national immunity, but it, um, but it is best practice to get the vaccine. Um, one thing that we did learn, a lot of people that had side effects, the ones that had the, um, the, no, no one had serious side effects, but, but the people that had more than just a sore arm, which most people had, were people that had COVID. So it kind of hit them a little harder, but, um, but we were able to talk to a couple of people that had COVID here and they said, yeah, you kind of feel down for about two days and then it's over. So, so we'll have some people, I think, that had COVID and, you know, we've had 86 staff members total that had, had COVID. Um, hopefully they will now take the shot, um, knowing that that's, you know, a best practice. Um, you know, a lot of people have been personally hit by, um, immediate family members getting, um, getting COVID and some even passing away. So it really hit home with them and, you know, they kind of saw it firsthand and sometimes unfortunately it takes an incident like that for something to kind of slap you in the face, say, hey, I really need to do something about it. So, so that was one reason. Um, one person said that they are still on the fence about getting it and they are going to wait to the third clinic just because they want to see what happens after the second shot. And, um, and I, you know, that's, I've got to respect that and, um, hopefully that, you know, we'll continue to educate and, and politely push and, and strongly encourage, um, them to get that. And I'm hoping after everyone sees from the second round that everybody's finally like the first round, even more people will get it and that is the, that's the ultimate goal. We, we all know that everybody's not going to get it the first time, we're not going to get the herd immunity that we need in, 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 in the first two rounds. There's only been 400,000 vaccines administered over eight, to let, to more than eight million people that live in North Carolina, so we're not even a fraction there. So it's going to take quite a while for everybody to get that. Now it being offered and taken in, I know it's two different things, but just be mindful that we still have a long way to go in the state of, um, of people getting it and, um, and hopefully our staff will continue to do that. Um, one thing I do want to mention is, um, you know, knowing that you have it should give you a security of you being protected. And I know it's only 50% now, but when you get the second one after about 14 days, you should be at about that 95% immunity, immunity level. Um, so, um, so that is something good to know. So, so I, I understand the concern is for why did not all the employees get it, but just know you're protected and, um, and that's the main thing. We can only control what we can control and, um, and we can't force certain things on certain people. And this is one of them at this time that may become different in a year or less when this is probably perhaps more widely mandatory, but for right now that is not the case. So we've just got to do all we can, uh, within our, um, within our realm to protect ourselves. And by you getting the shot is the most and best thing you can do. Um, a few other things, I think everybody knows that we offered some incentives to residents, excuse me, to employees that were, um, that did receive the vaccine. Um, and this will be paid out after they receive their second dose. We, um, we offered, um, eight hours paid vacation, so basically a vacation day to all full-time employees. Um, vacation is something that's a huge perk for employees. I like it as much as anything. I know it equates to dollars, but, but it's, it's kind of priceless to me. I'd much rather take a day than actually cash out the money. So a lot of people feel that same way. So, so we're able to provide eight hours vacation for all full-time people that received it and then also, um, to make it fair for the part-time people, they don't accrue hours for vacation, we pay them eight hours of their salary. So, um, so that was pretty enticed, so that added up to a decent amount of money. Um, that was, um, that was very attractive for people and, um, and also, um, a resident mentioned something else I forgot to mention that we did and that was doing raffles and gift cards. Um, we do have over $500 in gift card prizes that we're going to be raffling off on the 26th. Um, everyone will be included in that, um, even the first round people. Um, we're, um, we're not going to offer the eight hours paid or the eight hours vacation for people that did not take it the first time because we made a really big push to get as many people at first, um, to take the vaccine and that was a huge thing to offer. Um, I think offering it for free is enough, but unfortunately or fortunately that, um, having incentives is the way to go and a lot of people are doing that, most companies are doing that. So we did, um, so I did fail to mention, we have over $500 in gift cards we're going to be giving away and Mr. Brian over in Southfield just gave me some more ideas that we're going to try to implement as well. So, and, and, and that was one of them. So wanted to make sure I mentioned that. Um, one other cool thing that, uh, that about the paid time off, I'm sure we weren't the first in the world to do it, but yeah, I heard a new story last week, y'all may have heard it, that Dollar General is our first big company to offer, um, an incentive, um, of this nature to employees and they have 197,000 employees, they offer four hours paid vacation to all of their employees. So, um, so actually Jim Cox at HR and Donna McGee, who does our insurance and does a lot of our employee appreciation, they come up, came up with the idea of the, the paid time off, the eight hours. So that was really innovative. Again, I'm sure we weren't the first, you know, company to think of this, but it is a really neat incentive and, and the cool part is, um, it gives them a, a benefit the employees like, but it's not cash, cash that hits the books all at one time. You just accrue vacations paid out over a time, so you don't see X amount of money just come out of the budget, which is, um, which is another benefit for us. So anyway, so we'll continue to do that and, um, and, um, hopefully we'll get more people. Uh, one other thing I wanted to mention during our education session today, EJ, who is our new, our newer, um, staff development coordinator who took Margot's place. And by the way, I stay in touch with Margot, she told me to tell everybody hello, she's doing well. She is, uh, I think I told y'all that she is completely done with nursing. She was one of the cases you hear about all the time of healthcare professionals, she's completely getting burned out and for 10 months she worked herself ragged. So she is taking some time off and I think going to get back into retail management. So she want me to tell everybody hello. Um, but, um, EJ is, um, he's created these little QR codes and you may not be able to see it, but if you know what a QR code is, you got a smartphone, you put picture up to it and a lot of restaurants are doing it now or places you shop do not have a menu and it just pops up on your phone. Well, this QR code goes straight to what the Moderna vaccine is that we're offering here at Springmore. And when you click on this QR code, it goes straight to a YouTube video and it just starts talking about it. So it's really neat, I'll make sure Holly includes this in, in, in the memorandum, it won't be 500 of these little things, but hopefully, Daniel, if this thing's, if I, if we have it printed, will, will people be able to work, do it on their, okay. Yeah, so we'll, we'll put this in, yeah, we'll put this in the memo, um, and then you'll have it, you can scan it, just watch it. Um, most of y'all have gotten the vaccine, which is amazing and we got a lot more residents are going to get it. Um, but in case you're interested, uh, we're mainly using it for staff and we're promoting it that way, but thought that was pretty neat. So, um, I wanted to talk next about testing. Um, we are still required to do testing in the health center, but we're only having to test bi-weekly. Um, so we're only testing twice a month now. The state is continuing to pay for that through the end of March. Um, we're not sure if it's going to continue past that, um, but since we are not in outbreak status, um, we are only having to test, um, twice a month instead of every week. And that's just for employees, so that is, that is going well. And then if, and then if, you know, we, if somebody's having symptoms in employee or they think they've been exposed, you know, we'll test them as needed, same, same as residents, but we're just not going to conduct those mass testings every two weeks now. So, which is, which, which is, which is really good. Um, if you've seen our, our charts recently, you'll see that they have, um, that they, that they're low and they continue to stay low. Um, we came off the, um, North Carolina DHHS website, um, last Tuesday. We were technically off of it two Tuesdays ago, but they update those charts every Tuesday and Friday and unfortunately they've just been slow to get that updated and I don't fault them for that, they have a lot to do like we do and, um, but they, um, they did update it, um, this past Tuesday and we are off there, which means that, you know, we went, I think I told everybody, went 28 days, consecutive days with no new cases. And as long as we go, um, continue to go, those consecutive days with no more than two cases will stay off the list. If we get two K, more than two cases, we do go, go back on the list, um, for the Stuart Health Center. Um, again, that's, that's the only licensed area that's on there and, um, but the, the numbers will start back at zero. So once you come off the list, it, 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 it resets. So, um, so, you know, it may show two residents or, or, or three employees or, or whatever, it's not going to have the totals as it had before. And that's just a system they do, that's not trying to hide anything. I have, we have no control over that, but that is how DHHS, um, how they record it and how they, um, publicize it and, but our charts are ongoing and running and, and we keep them that way. So, so that was really good. Um, currently we have, um, four current cases, um, three employees and one resident. Um, so that is, um, that's four too many, but it's, it's, it's much better than it was. Um, I think everyone is doing okay, um, that, that has it right now. Um, we're seeing this, um, much, much fewer and far between, um, since I guess after Thanksgiving, which our last kind of big surge, um, we've seen it a lot less. And, um, and so this, even though we have those four cases, we only have one person, um, in the health center that, um, that, that, that has COVID. Um, so that does not affect any visitation, so we can continue to do that. Um, so as I mentioned earlier about going back on the list, if we have 28 day, if we, if we get two or more cases, we have to go back on the list and we have to stop indoor visitation until we go 14 days. So anyway, it's, uh, the, the cases in the health center are tied to a lot of things and we try very hard to keep those at minimal or hopefully at nothing. So, so next we'll talk about visitation. I know a lot of people are anxious and want to know about this and I just do not have answers to this unfortunately. I'll tell you what I do know. Um, I have, um, there, we are trying to find out or trying to get some type of indication of what, what the visitation policy will be like in healthcare facilities, like the health center after everyone receives the vaccine. We, we do not have any information on that yet, but there is a call today, um, with the state, with, um, with a couple of interest groups, Leading Age, North Carolina, one of them, and then the fourth, the healthcare associate, North Carolina Healthcare Association, which is the for-profit homes and they're trying to get a feel from the state of, of when restrictions may be able to be loosened. Uh, once I know that, I'll let y'all know, but there's not been anything announced. I assume that things will ease back in, um, as they were kind of phased out. Um, I don't see it just being open where families and spouses and anybody can come and go freely in the health center anytime of day, anywhere. I envision something of even though we may have two or more cases, we can still have, um, indoor visitation. Uh, maybe it's where our families can come and visit in the residence room and not have to go to a common room, but go nowhere else, um, one person at a time. Um, again, that's just what I envisioned, I have no idea, but as soon as we find that out, we will let y'all know. So I just do not have answers to that. Um, also as far as, um, as, as independent living, uh, we're going to keep doing what we've been doing for a while, which is our process and, um, I think it's working pretty well. Um, again, nothing's a safe haven here, um, and, and we know that, but, um, also we can't continue to deny family members to come in and, and, and see their loved ones. It's almost been a year, so we're going to continue to check them in and work on that. Rashad, um, shoring that up a little bit, he's our new director of security and transportation. So we're going to continue that. I would say at least through March, if not longer. How long we have to screen and take temperatures? Again, I have no idea. Um, we will find that out eventually, but, but just for now, I, I, I just do not know. Um, let's see. Um, other restrictions, um, like, um, like gatherings, gatherings and, and maximum occupancy per rooms or dining room occupancy, um, all that is unsure as well. You know, all that's going to be from the governor. Uh, we can only have 10 people, um, in one space. I assume it will go back to 25 like it was before and then it'll go to 50. So it's just going to slowly increase, um, dining room capacity will eventually go from 50% to a higher amount, probably 75 or 65 to 75, I had to guess. And then I assume they'll allow more people in, in smaller areas within a small, less, less than six feet. But again, this is all just what I'm envisioning, um, from previous experiences we've had with this. So again, once this is known, we will let everybody know. But again, the gathering spaces, um, the things we offer, um, the dining, um, all that is, you know, the, we're all still, our hands are being tied still at this point. We can't just open the floodgates, everything. Uh, the last thing I want to go over before I make one quick announcement is a lot of people have asked about travel and quarantine. We made a big push early and a big push over the holidays, which really, really helped us, um, as far as traveling and quarantine. There was a lot of talk about, um, you know, that there was going to be a big surge during the holidays and then kind of a surge within a surge of, um, people getting together for the holidays and then coming back and spreading it to wherever they've been. So we implemented that anyone in independent living that goes and stays out overnight, that they would need to quarantine and anybody at the health center that was taken out, even eat dinner for two hours with their daughters or stay overnight, would have to quarantine the isolation unit for two weeks. That proved very well because we did not see those spikes that the whole country saw historical spikes between Thanksgiving and Christmas and even into the new year. We never saw that. Our numbers were coming down and were already down at that point. That's why we've been off the list since last, since, or over a week ago and we had to go 28 days before that. So our numbers were trending down and were very minimal even, but even after Thanksgiving. So we are, so we put that in place and that worked well. Um, but as of now, um, we are not restricting any, um, any overnight travel. So if you have a beach house or a mountain house or you want to go see your daughter and I don't know, Atlanta, I like Atlanta, it's a big city, but I like it. And I know Mr. Page has got some family in Atlanta. So let's say Dr. Page wants to go see his daughter in Atlanta, um, can't take in a Braves game yet, but, um, hopefully this year he can. And so he comes back, he would not have to quarantine for 14 days. Um, we just asked that he just, you know, monitor his symptoms and, and just, um, just be conscious of it. Um, so no, no quarantine after overnight stays for IL residents. Um, ER stays, that's on a case-by-case basis. We know everyone in independent living that goes out to the ER because it goes through the clinic. Joyce will decide based upon how long they were there, what they were in for and where they went, if they need to be isolated for a certain amount of time. So that's going to be a case-by-case basis. And as far as a hospital stay or, or a, um, temporary Stuart Health Center stay, that will require a quarantine of 10 days. So, um, so a hospital stay and a health center stay, that's automatic until, until we move forward. So hopefully that answers all your questions about travel and quarantine and, um, um, and what you can and cannot do, um, which is a tough thing to have to enforce, but that is how it is. And, uh, lastly, I wanted to read some announcements from Kerry and then I'll be happy to take any questions that y'all have. Um, I know there's an MLK special, I think Ms. Linda Edwards is going to be conducting on here at three o'clock, which is really cool. And then we're going to do our next staff education panel, uh, with, with employees at three o'clock in the great room. So, um, so Kerry wanted me to remind everybody that the fitness schedule and protocols are not changing at this time. If you've been signed up for a class, the schedule will continue. If you're not participating in person and would like to attend, please call Kerry Ritchie. The mobile, uh, secondly, the Rex Mobile Mammogram Coach will be on campus next month, Friday the 17th. Please call Kerry to schedule your appointment. So those are some important announcements that we wanted to, um, to get to and that is everything I wanted to go over. I hope that covers a lot of stuff. We're going to, um, we're going to not schedule any more town halls, uh, moving forward, um, on a monthly basis, but if it's something where I need to do one, we will. Um, we're trying to just make sure the auditorium is, um, is available for everybody. Um, committees are starting to meet back, um, employee groups, um, are starting to meet back and, uh, we just want to try to keep this open and, um, of course I could reserve this once a month, but just, um, you know, we'll continue to update y'all with any information we have. Uh, and if there's something special I need to come on and talk about, I'll give plenty of notice and say, hey, we'll do a special town hall meeting and I'll let y'all know. So, um, just want to continue to make sure y'all know that we try to provide this information as accurate and as quick as possible. So there's never one point where we've tried or kept anything from y'all. If there's something that has been late to get out or if there's something that, um, that not everybody knew about, um, that was not on purpose. There have been many, many cases that we've had to inform families and residents and staff and I can't even count the amount of times that they all just kind of, they all kind of run together, but never once have we, um, have we not been transparent about anything. I know that several people have said that and, um, that's kind of discouraging to a lot of us because we work very hard and that's not what we're about. We've, we've never been shy to show the numbers we have or anything like that. Um, I'm not, um, I'm not ashamed of that in any way because I know we've done the best we can, but I'm disappointed in it. Whole goal was for A was for nobody to ever get the virus and B for no one, nobody to ever, never pass away from it, but that didn't happen, so I'm disappointed, but, um, but, but I'm not ashamed of it. We, we did the best we could and we continue to do the best we can. It's, you know, it would be different if we were the only place that were going through this, but as we see and hear across the world in communities and, and just record high numbers and the amount of deaths, Springmore is no different. We, we're a part of society, we're a community. Um, as much as we want to think we're kind of closed in our own little world, uh, you know, we're not. People have to come and go, including residents, including staff, contractors. I mean, we can't just close off everything. Um, so that is, um, that's reality and I've come to grips with that and, and I, I feel good about it, even though I'm, you know, disappointed it didn't come out better. But anyway, with that said, I'll be happy to take any questions you have. Is it seven zero five four? Or seven zero five four? And, uh, if you have any questions, please let me know and I'll be happy to, um, try to answer anything you have. Yeah. Okay, that's a good, uh, so somebody asked a question of when we plan to open up the bistro and the garden cafe? I don't have an exact date for that, but I've been talking to Jennifer and we're thinking, um, we're thinking around March 1st. The whole, whole thought process is let's get our second shot, um, which will be the end of this month. Um, the best practice is to wait two weeks and that, this kind of full effect of and then provide as much as immunity as I think we're going to get at that point. And then, excuse me, have two weeks to plan and, um, and, and just start everything at the beginning of the month. So it's still going to be limited of where we, of where we, the amount of tables and the people we have in there, but we're shooting hopefully for March 1st to, to do that. We're just going to make sure that everybody's, many people have their second shot as possible and we, and we went through that, um, went through that time period. For, for us or? Um, so the question is, is there HIPAA regulation to, to give out information of how many people have contracted COVID here and how many people have passed? Um, no, I mean, it's not, I give it out to y'all every day. Um, it's, you know, the, 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 the health department has had, has, has had access to it. What we can't do is tell you who have it and who has died from it. Uh, that's the part that gets, uh, who has not had the vaccine, who's had the vaccine, who's had COVID, who hadn't had it, who's died, who hadn't died. Those are the specifics we can't give out, but numbers are numbers and, and yeah, I mean, there's nothing, I'm not sure who would, who you'd want to give those to, but, um, but yeah, that's, that's nothing against HIPAA for that. Okay. Well, that looks like that's all the, all the, the questions we had, those were great questions, thank you. Hopefully, um, I'm very hopeful that, that I answered a lot of questions in here, that that's why we didn't have a lot of questions. Um, I thought there would be after not doing this for a while, but I tried to cover as much as I could of things I've been hearing, things I know people have been concerned and worried about. Um, so we, um, so yeah, so I hopefully hit everything. Um, we will get out a recap memo to y'all as we always do. I guess it will be tomorrow before we get it out? Yep, tomorrow night, it'll go out, so you'll see it Friday morning, hard copy. And as always, um, Stuart Health Center families will get it, your family members will get it if we have their email address and then you'll get electronic version as well. So remember we timed that to go out all right about the same time, so the, um, actual electronic versions won't go out till Friday morning, so we can, so, so everybody kind of. versions won't go out till Friday morning. So we can, so, so everybody kind of sees it at the same time, but we'll get this out to you. In the meantime, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to let one of us know, myself, um, any nurse in the health center, any department manager, um, they're all here to help. Um, again, if somebody doesn't know the answer, we'll do our best to try to, try to find the answer for you. And, um, and we look forward to, um, things continuing to open up and things, um, kind of getting back to normal and all kind of starts with our, with our, with our vaccines again on the 26th. So, uh, I look forward to seeing y'all then and, uh, and y'all have a great rest of the day and happy new year.